Hi. It's just turned seven o'clock. We'd like to start on time here, so welcome everyone to our Harrisville City Council meeting tonight. It is August nineteenth. We appreciate you being here. Thank you, Council. Our Councilmember Weiss is on the phone, so he is actually present, although he's not visible, so he is here. I will now turn the opening ceremony over to Councilmember Fawcett.
Please rise with glad allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our dear father and children are grateful for this opportunity to meet, discuss the needs of the city, and to be able to make votes and decisions that will be the best for those who are that we represent and that we'll be able to accomplish the goals that we've set for the city and to move forward in the way that thou have us do, and we ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Fawcett. Moving on to our consent items. Item eight is approval of meeting minutes for July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and August fifth, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Councilmembers, will you vote to those? Are there any change in your opinions? Nothing to discuss?
No, I don't think so.
All right, so we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and August fifth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second? All right, motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item four. This is an appointment of a planning commissioner. So I'm going to introduce to you now Christina Palmer. Would you come up here to the podium? And I'm going to let you introduce yourself a little bit, will you?
I'm Christina Palmer. I live here in Harrisville, Utah. I'm the owner of the property rental. And happily married, and just happy and healthy.
We have a visit about six weeks ago or something, and it's taken a little while to get you on the agenda, so thank you so much for being here tonight. Unless you have any questions for her, this is to ratify the appointment of Christina to the planning commissioner.
Any background? I mean, it's nice to know you're married and happy. Tell us a little bit about your background.
Like, I'm a little child.
Myself, open for that. As far as your qualifications?
No, I don't have any qualifications for this. When I had the meeting with the mayor, I just want to know why, you know? Like, I love the city. I live here. I do want it to grow. But I want to see, like, why we're going to grow in certain ways, how is it going to affect our community, you know? Like, want to be in the know.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm a little lost of what a commissioner does.
Okay.
Okay. So can I get some explanation on that?
On our planning commission? So there you go.
Oh, this is on the planning commission. I'm sorry.
Okay. You got it now?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
No, it's good to have you on.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, we got to prepare ourselves. We have to ratify this.
Yes, we do.
Let me ask you stuff, please.
I'll make a motion that we advise and consent to ratify mayor's appointment of a planning commissioner.
For me?
What's that?
Christina Palmer.
All right, second. Good with that?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, no one has opposed? So you will, your next meeting will be on September tenth here, which is a Wednesday night for planning commission. You will be sworn in that night, and you will be set to go.
That sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Number five, our business items. We have a YCC presentation. We're going to have Tammy Haby and Lily Hansen, and I think Tammy's first. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Tammy Haby, and Mayor Tate approached me about a year ago about the Harrisville City Fairbooth. And so I was so excited, and so I put a lot of thought into this. And I had, about Easter time, I learned that our niece was actually on the youth council. And I didn't know that it existed. And I thought, if I don't know, then I bet a lot of other people don't know. And so I figured, what other way to spotlight are amazing youth than to have them featured in a booth? And so this is what I envisioned. I wanted it to be a place that people could stop at and actually interact with it. We, I made and printed out, what's your summer camp name? And that was really fun. In fact, I talked to a lady that I'm friends with. We were talking about the booth. And I said, yeah, we even, you know, had a summer camp name, and she remembered the booth and remembered her summer camp. So that was, that was really, really fun. But I knew that when I heard that there was a youth council, that's what I wanted to focus on. So I was actually, this is how the idea came to me. One of my favorite places is going to the Harrisville cabin. And just sit at it, sit and ponder. It's just one of my favorite places. And so I thought, how do I want to focus on them? And so I thought to, I would do a summer camp theme. And that the kids would be the counselors. And so we made, all the kids sent me little snippets of why they loved the council, why they chose it, what their future plans are. So I made each one of these for the kids, and they're hanging up, so that people can stop by the booth and see why these kids wanted to do what they are doing for our city. And then we had flyers. I was, I was sad that our table was so far back, and it's roped off. So none of the fair patrons could reach the flyers, but hopefully they were able to stand QR code. Do you want to, I don't know if there are more pictures? So one of the things that was really important to me was to get the kids as much involved in the naming of the camp and things like that. So they met at my house, and we discussed what they discussed, their camping. And this is the camping that they came up with. Harrisville UCC Forum Mall Creek Summer Camp. And Elizabeth actually pointed out that on the agenda tonight is, mentions Forum Mall Creek. Side note, I didn't know what Forum Mall Creek was. And so these last couple weeks, I have been going down a Harrisville history rabbit hole, and it has made me so happy. I've learned so much about our incredible city. I don't know if there's more picture, but I found that pictures. Yeah, so this is just another part of the display. And there's our flyers. And there are the kids that came and helped set up, Elizabeth. And it was just a lot of, a lot of fun. The council came the ninety-four to help me set up, so we set up the background, and they put the pictures together and decorated it that night, which was really, really fun. Every year, I didn't know this, but there is a People's Choice Award where people can vote their favorite city. And I don't know if you know this, but Harrisville City, they had a five-way tie. For number one, number one, they've never had that in the history of, of the fair. And they had only made one basket, prize basket. So anyway, we came in top five of the favorite of the people in our area and in our county. And I was just, I was so proud of that, and I may be so excited. But was a little disappointed, because they only made one basket. I'm like, certainly they could, you know, round up something for our company. But no, we were really proud, and it was such an amazing, oh my gosh. It was so fun getting to know the youth of the city. They're incredible. And all of you are incredible for supporting them and all that, all that they do for, for the citizens of the city. And I love Harrisville so much, and thank you for the opportunity to do this booth. I had the adventure of a lifetime, and I'd be happy to do it again in the future.
What was I going to say, but thank you so much?
Oh, no, I knew exactly what I was saying. I did. I thought that through first. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lily. I hope you're all doing well this evening. I'd like to take a moment and share my experience at a 4H council, or a 4H conference that I attended earlier this year. Megan Hall, Teens Lifting Teens Coordinator, reached out to me and invited me to teach a workshop in term. And so in preparation, we met a few times, and we ended up teaching a workshop about organization at this conference. And it was super awesome. It definitely pushed me completely out of my comfort zone. But it was so incredible and so rewarding. The theme of this conference was grit and grace, and I had the opportunity to attend workshops on resilience, diligence, and the importance of pushing forward when things get hard. It was an awesome conference. I'm so glad we were invited, and then I got to go. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Tammy for her outstanding representation of our council. We were so excited when she reached out to us and wanted to highlight us. She did a wonderful job creating the booth and sharing the work that our council has been doing these past few years. We were thrilled to see so many people learn about what we have been accomplishing. We'd also like to thank Earl for his continued support and interest in our council, for taking the time to come out to a few things and activities. And a special thank you to Cynthia, who helps run things behind the scenes, as well as representing us in the city newsletter and on Facebook. Lastly, I'd like to give a huge thank you to my mom, who has served as our advisor. She has guided and supported our council in so many ways. And since she'll be leaving this year, we want to recognize her for the time, care, and dedication she has given us. Looking ahead, this next month, Teens Lifting Teens is publishing a study on youth councils and the impact of their support. As part of that, we're holding a focus group on September fourth from six thirty to seven thirty. Any of you are welcome to attend if you want to learn more about the grant that has made such a huge impact on our council. Finally, I'd like to share that we're preparing to hold our own election soon for a new mayor and our own little council within our group. Thank you for your time and continued support. Are there any questions I can answer?
All right.
Thank you so much.
We're moving on to item B, which is a discussion, possible action to approve storm, stormwater regulations update. Turn the turnover to Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item on the agenda comes from state requirements for our stormwater permitting and regulations. A few years ago, the state increased the requirements for our stormwater maintenance and permits. And part of that is identifying and locating and maintaining our stormwater connections. There's some new connection requirements, and also the location of those connections needs to be reported to the state. So there is not, we don't have the staff. We have Jessie Sainsbury, who's our stormwater lead here with us to answer any of your stormwater-related questions tonight. But we do not have enough stormwater staff to conduct this requirement on our own. So we have a, we received a bid from Jones, a cost estimate from Jones and Associates, for them to compile the information and identify the GIS locations and increase the control measures. All of those things are outlined here in, in this quote. There's a couple of options. This is one of those examples of the unseen effects of the state mandates on the city's budget. There are a couple of options we have to pay for this study. One of them is to forego our annual maintenance for a portion of that. I believe the total on that's not enough to cover this. It's around twenty-five-ish thousand dollars for our annual maintenance on that. And then we'd have to pull the rest from our capital projects. Or we can pull the full amount from our capital projects, the forty-three thousand, forty-five dollars that's required to bring us into compliance. The state is currently conducting audits to make sure cities are in compliance, and we want to get out ahead of this. We certainly would rather pay to have compliance than to pay penalties for being out of compliance. So staff is asking for this to be added to your next budget item, the final approval of the budget, and with your recommendation of how you would like us to proceed to cover those costs.
So a question, when you talk about taking it out of capital projects, is there one specific one? Or is it just kind of, it's several? Because I know I voted for capital projects specifically, so I'm saying, is it taken out of law? Or is it just generally tried across the top?
It would be under the storm water.
Okay.
From our capital projects.
You mentioned this was mandated. They're obviously not offering any type of a grand help or anything to that nature for your town.
No, this is similar to all the other state mandates. But a lot of larger cities have a full stormwater group, and they can do this requirement on their own. We, we do not have that option. It requires the GIS locations and identifiers for where our stormwater outlets are. There's also other, again, I defer to Jessie on some of the technical items on that. But there are other requirements on those outlets and the infrastructure and making sure they're maintained. All of those things.
Do you want to put him on spot?
If you have specific questions for him, he's here.
Do you have any more information that you could clarify for the council?
It's basically just all of the documentation of, like, private-to-private storm drain basins throughout the city. Just basically who owns them and how often they maintain them and the responsibility. It still has to be documented. Yeah, they want documentation from two thousand and two to now. And they haven't ever really been as strict as they are until about five years ago. And so, like, a lot of the cities, including us, we don't have the documentation on hand. But Jones has that documentation that they'll put together in the plan and what we're asking them to do.
Anything, Council?
No, that helps me get an idea of what it's about.
Yeah.
So what are the penalties like? Not that I want to go there.
I'm really not sure, but I can imagine it's very good.
No, I imagine it's not. Okay.
So we just not have that information because they weren't strict and we weren't keeping the records?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, they didn't require us to keep the records. It was kind of an optional thing, especially like ten years ago, when everything was still on paper. It wasn't online and stuff like that. But the last five years, they've been really strict on it.
So what have we done to, to improve that compliance so that we don't have to do this in the future?
So if we have Jones set up this all up for us in the future, we shouldn't ever have to hire him to do this program again. He'll be able to track of everything.
So something we can maintain?
Yeah. Yeah, it's basically just to help us get started.
And so all the training to, to do the program and run the program, they'll do all of that after they get a new place?
Yeah, they'll show us how all that information works and stuff.
Okay, just so that we won't have to outsource anything else after getting in place?
Yeah, exactly.
So when you say you're taking this money out of stormwaters as far as paying for all, is there a project specifically we're moving towards, putting money into your storm, stormwater projects?
So if we use the stormwater utility fee, we, we camera a third of this city, correct me if I'm wrong, Tacy, but we camera a third of this city as cleaning every, on an annual basis. So the city's broken up into thirds, and every three years, the whole city must then camera. So we're suggesting that we delay that a year and use the funds, it's around twenty-five thousand dollars for us to count those annually. And we're, we can, we have that option, that we can use and put that money towards it and reduce the amount that would come out of the capital projects fund. Or we can take the full amount out of the capital projects fund. The budget didn't include an additional forty-three thousand dollars in the stormwaters. So I think, to clarify maybe your question a little bit, is you're wondering if, if the capital projects funds are divided into different categories rather than just a general fund for projects? And so we're going to use, you know, stormwater, what we've got, that twenty-five thousand, and then the rest would come from like a general projects fund. Is that correct?
If that's what you want.
Or it will all come from the general projects fund?
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Jessie, I have a question. So if we delay and put this off for a year, is that putting the city in danger in any way?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my next question, is that sometimes if you put it off, it's hard to catch up.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know when, when the audit would take place for our city. Again, it's us trying to get out ahead of the regulations versus waiting until it comes on us.
Yeah, there's already been a lot of cities that surround us that's been audited so far. So it's kind of just a matter of time, so the sooner we can be in compliance, the better.
The likelihood is high.
Yeah.
As we're getting down to where the rule of law is now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
So would you like to go ahead with this contract as what this motion would be?
And where the money went down from?
I kind of like putting off the cameraing for a year.
Coming up with the twenty-five thousand, but that would look, yeah.
Yeah, you're not taking all of the capital projects.
Is that the, I, I would need a motion stating all of this.
Well, that's what we're waiting for.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we go ahead and put off the cameraing for the cameraing, taking pictures for a year and use that twenty-five thousand dollars to offset the difference. But I would go ahead with this project with, as the biggest with Jones and Associates.
Okay.
Is that a good enough?
Yeah, we can just mention the amount so that we have that on record.
The amount would be forty-three thousand dollars and forty-five cents. I can't see the document.
Forty-four thousand, forty-five dollars.
Forty-five, so.
Yeah. Except for the amount that's written on it, but.
Okay, I have a motion and a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can you oppose them?
I've got the motion here. That needs to be a roll call because that's huge money. Yes, it does. It is a roll call. I didn't have that in front of me, so sorry.
Let's do this. Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we did that right. Item C, which is a discussion, possible action to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-six final budget for Harrisville City. Not only Harrisville City, but Harrisville Community Reinvestment Agency and Forum Mall Special Service District. I'm going to turn the turnover to Jill for a second.
So, sorry, wrong control. In the packet, the budget looked huge. It's because there's three different budgets, so you're able to see the difference. There's one if we maintain the rate, one if it's halfway, and then one if there's no change. So that way you can see in your packets the different revenues that would come from that. We did make one on the fee schedule, which is on the very end of the budget. We did add verbiage with the Northview Fire and Central Weaver Sewer, their impact fees, that we are referring back to their studies. We're just doing a courtesy and collecting those fees at the time of the bill implement. So that verbiage has changed. And we added the late fee that the state gave us permission for the the finance, the final, the finance for the candidates. So that is the only things that have changed since before when you saw those.
Any discussion, Council?
Yeah, I just, could you kind of clarify then what it means to capture new growth?
Yes. I know that's a, that's a unique way of putting it. That's in the finance realm. That's what, how verbiage we use. So you have your rate, and you have the revenue that comes through. And Jenny Chinman, if you, because I know Jenny and I communicate a little different. I'm used to the financial realm, Jenny's used to the other, which is great. I appreciate it. With the new growth, you're just not capturing it at the same rate. If there's no change, we're, it's really basing it off of the revenue. So you're getting the same revenue, but with the new homes that are recorded, again, at the beginning of the year, because that's when everything's done. They're not, I'm trying to think how to put it to make it a little easier to explain. They're not paying the same rate, because it's based on that revenue rather than the rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, you know, on the last, on the last line from two weeks ago, the amount that comes in from the, from, from the Weaver County, that, that anticipates increase as far as new growth?
So.
This is where I get a little bit.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
The portion where it said twenty, that's twenty-seven thousand dollars of it was the new growth. That is the amount of the new capture of, say, okay, all this new growth that's now recorded and capturing it with the new rate of that forty-four thousand, twenty-seven thousand of that would be from just the new growth. Does that kind of clear things up a little bit more?
So in other words, the county is trying to anticipate cost of living and growth and everything, so that it captures that? Maybe I'm not making sense. How is Jenny?
Okay, so new growth can be looked at in several ways. Probably the easiest way to, to look at it is to use Ashley Code as an example across the street here. So the city captured property tax on the land before it was developed. So yes, we're capturing property tax on that. Then it was subdivided into twenty-three lots with homes built on it. And when the county assesses those, the, the new property taxes on those homes, do we capture that growth? Yes, that increase goes into our property tax. But if we don't maintain our rate, we're just main, we're, we're maintaining our revenue. We have two options as a council. We either maintain the rate so that all the residents in Harrisville are being taxed at a certain rate, or the city maintains the revenue. It doesn't really matter how many homes are added to Harrisville. We're only going to receive the same amount of revenue. Those are our two options in life, your two and taxation. So to say that we're not capturing new growth at all is, is not what we're saying. We know that those homes are now paying a higher property tax because there are homes that are valued a lot greater than the raw land was. But there, if we don't do truth in taxation and capture and maintain our rate, then our revenue stream just stays the same. Yes, all the property tax put into the city would lower for our existing residents because the new property owners would be paying into that revenue capture. So we have. So we have those two options every time we go through truth in taxation. We either maintain our rate or we maintain our revenue. Those are the two options we have.
So by maintaining the rate, we increase the revenue because, okay.
Because we capture that rate and then you have a bigger pool to capture that from. And as home values increase, the certified tax rate does drop. And so if we don't maintain that rate as the home values continue to go up, as we saw captured three years ago and in the larger property tax increases, we saw that home values had gone up too. Those are our options when thinking about the truth in taxation process. Does the council want to maintain the certified tax rate or do we want to maintain the revenue?
And so the other thing is making sure I understand is we put the budget together, the budget is built upon services. Okay? And so when you talked about last time, Jill, services go up, we have this and this and we have to pay for this. So if, if we want to lower our tax rate or maintain the tax rate, then we are either taking services away or maintaining them. Is that basically what we're talking about? So as you put your budget together, this is what it costs for the police department, this is what it costs for administration, this is what it costs for park and recreation to maintain what we want as a city. So we don't maintain it, basically we lose. Or you stretch your.
We have to be creative in what can be dropped or what, for example, I mean, the stormwater was a perfect example. There's some things that we can't anticipate that come through, some things with the state we have to do. So down the road, if we continually not change and the cost of everything goes up, then we're in our, the same predicament that we've been in, was it four years ago, three? And then we do without some things that can hinder the safety of our police officers or parks, or our parks go downhill. You know, the difference with the general fund versus the utility funds, the utilities should maintain themselves just like, but the general fund has more expenses because we have council, we have all these things that, you know, either the residents or by the state requires, that's going to be a big thing that we kind of have to, to do.
Okay, thank you. I've got my questions. Okay, thank you. Any more questions from council?
Mayor, I'd like to just say, I, I don't have a question. I'd just like to say, if we maintain the rate personally, we maintain the rate, we, we can't, we are able to bring in some more funds. Because with, with the state doing the things that they're doing, and just like this, this water project, that they, they want it done now, but they are looking to put in money into it to help, we need to maintain that. There'll be not a great increase, but the increase helps keep us financially sound.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other comments, discussion?
No.
Are you ready to make a motion?
So it's either maintain half or no change.
Correct. Is anyone ready to make a motion for this? If you do, you cannot just say maintain half or no change, you have to state the certified tax rate that you have in front of you, which one you want to do.
Say that again?
You have to actually state the rate you want to go to, not just say half or maintain.
I don't mind jumping in, but from my words and my verbiage today, all the way back to the beginning, it's not been good. I apologize. I think it's got.
She does crop a guy, I'd be really worried.
It's hell I'm worried about, it's not her. No, it's easy.
I don't, I don't know who's going to make a staff out and put up.
Okay. I make a proposal, then we go ahead and capture the new, I honestly maintain by using the rate point zero-zero-one-five-six-two, it'd be a one-point-seven-six-seven increase to maintain the what?
Certified tax rate.
The certified tax rate.
That's, that's good. Am I going to second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I do need a roll call on this one. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Fosse?
No.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
All right, well, that did not pass.
I make a motion that we adopt a rate of point, zero-point-zero-zero-one-five-four-eight as a verified tax rate, which would be halfway.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Another roll call, please. Councilmember Weiss?
No.
Councilmember Fosse? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
All right. That's twice. Maybe we should have some more discussion, that's my.
Okay, do you want to do that?
We're just throwing out numbers without any, you know, why, why are we doing this? And what's the impact? What's our main goal here? Because, you know, we do want the city to grow, we want to maintain things and want to maintain what we have and, and what we offer, but at the same time, everybody's been hit really hard with taxes and other increases that have caused other people concern and we've all been reached out to by members of the community, um, that are concerned about any raise at all. But I do understand that growth has to pay for itself, to, to be honest. We, we're not a charitable entity and we have to maintain, um, I don't expect the state to come in and give us money for anything that they ask us to do because they're maintaining their own government. Um, so we have to be self-sufficient as a city. So what does that look like? And that's my question for discussion. What does that look like for us to maintain, um, but also represent what, whom we can ask to represent?
Everything I've looked at, what I've been studying, my plan was to come in here tonight and say no change at the point zero-zero-one-five, sorry, I can't see that far from my blind.
Five-three-four.
So no change. Um, and then when this was brought up with this, uh, thing that we just talked about, that the city or the state's mandating.
The stormwater?
That's why I believe, yes, we're going to forego the camera right now, and that's the twenty-five thousand. This right here with the halfway growth would make up the difference. That's why I said in half, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So just all of you know.
All right. One moment, Steve.
Okay. One of the concerns that I have is, is this taken us how many years to get ourselves to one time that what we used to call a rainy day fund or the capital projects fund now is healthy? We're in the process of building a building, whether a potential building, another building, and part of that money has been earmarked out of that capital project funding for payments. I am concerned that we maintain the percentage that the state allows us to the top. I don't know where we are right now as far as accumulating excess funds. And I don't know, I'm not even going to ask where are we because that's putting us in a spot and that's not fair right now. But at the same time, if I feel like we don't maintain what we've got going here as far as our, our tax rate, uh, then we're going to start depleting that. Not just this one here, but this one here, this here, it will come back to haunt us. And for growth, well, what's going to happen in the next three years or four years of at least another two thousand people coming into this, that means every one of these people here are going to be having to have that many more people to deal with, more parks, more staff, more police. That's the reason I'm looking at maintaining it. It's not so much, I know how it feels and looks, but I'm also looking at the future. I realize there will be growth that comes along with that, but I also know that prices are already increasing and they will continue to increase. That's guaranteed. I guess that was along with the given, you either die or live, and now we have taxes too. But my concern is being able to keep the city as solid as possible and maintain options for the growth and taking care of maintaining new investments and people moving into the city and being able to take care of the, the basic structural needs that a city is over, which is what? Uh, safety?
There's three things.
Of the groups, you know, as far as what's going on, you know, as far as those, maintaining that, that costs money to do that. So it's bottom line, you see, you can do without the service, which means do we put off two years now, putting off the sewer, just as an example, or, you know, go on, but it's, you know, it's, the money is going to come from someplace. And I think that there's a lot of people that feel like you just pull the money out of the air or it's in a reserve fund here. I don't know what really is happening in fact, but they understand you're taking money away from something that you put into a project or something this year. It may be hiring a new police officer, it may not be hiring a new person in parks that you need to develop and maintain the parks, or a staff member. I got confused on this because for some reason I thought planning commissioner or planner, not commissioner.
I see, city planner, I see what you're saying.
And my mind went, gee. Yeah, hey, we're hiring somebody, this is doing it. And so I thought, okay, my concern is being able to maintain what we've got going on. That's where I'm coming.
Thank you. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, I know we're, to maintain, we're talking, yes, it's going to cost every citizen in the city a very small amount. I mean, some people think it's large, but I think from five to ten dollars is not a, a huge sacrifice compared to all the other things that are being asked of us throughout the entire town. But the thing I'm concerned with and, and, you know, I, I was here when we had to make a very, very large tax increase, reason being that we never did small increases. And then it came to a point where we had to make a very huge increase. By doing these small increases, I wish everybody to understand that sometimes, you know, we are only asking for very little. We didn't, I, as a council, I feel have worked hard to get the city back on financial grounds. Jenny, all of the city staff have done great jobs of budgeting and doing the things that we need. And so by maintaining and keeping it where it is, I think it keeps us in a, in a position to be financially sound. Again, you have no idea as a city council or a mayor, we have no idea what the state's going to whip up again. It's only three months, four months before they get back into session or five months, and we don't know what's coming out and it could cost us more money. So I don't want to see us take a step backwards. I want to see, I think if we stay where we're at, I think we stay healthy.
Thank you. Everybody's spoken.
I'm okay. Make the motion that we maintain the verified tax rate of point zero-zero-one-five-six-two.
I have a motion and a second. All right. Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right, that's three calls. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries. Appreciate your discussion and thoughtfulness on that. It's not easy. Item D, discussion possible action to accept authorization, assignment, and assumption of the master development agreement for Oak Hollow Development. Uh, Jenny, then?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, as we transition into this next item, it should be somewhat familiar with you, for you. We made an assignment a few months ago of the Summit Use Project, and this is an assignment of the Oak Hollow subdivision to the same purchaser from the same seller. So this is just a reassignment of master development agreement from the original developer to the Cody Reese Construction Development Team. Brody has reviewed this, it's literally identical to the other except for the names of the subdivision. Um, we do have the developer present to answer any of your questions, but it is recommended by staff, we don't see any issue with this.
Any questions, council?
Can you just remind me where the Oak Hollow subdivision is?
Yes, thank you, my apologies. This sits between Marsden Lane and seven hundred pounds.
Certainly you'd like to add something over?
That's that.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think they've got it and we've been through this through and forth, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more questions or discussions? Okay, are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, mayor.
Okay.
I, uh, make a motion that we accept authorization, assignment, and assumption of the master developer agreement for Oak Hollow Development.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. This is also a roll call. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item E, discussion possible action for parks bathrooms. I'm turning over to Director White.
Thank you, this is just an opportunity to revisit, um, the status of our park restrooms. Um, there's been, there's, we've come up with a little bit of issue with stormwater. Jesse's been very patient with us on, uh, coming up with a resolution on, uh, where to place the porta potties. Hopefully you've had a chance to read the memorandum in your packet, which explains a little bit of that. Um, we've also had a lot of comment from park users to staff and questions as far as why are, why are park restrooms not, uh, open? Um, there's been comment that we're unable to maintain them and, and of course, we, we always, we try to reply with, well, it's due to vandalism. So a lot of people, I, I don't feel like understand why they're closed. And so I just wanted to revisit this. We don't have a lot of time left before the restrooms were closed anyway, but we are budgeting quite a bit of money every year for porta potties and just wanted to bring this back up to your attention to, to hear your thoughts and direction on, uh, if you'd like to continue doing what we're doing or to remove them and, uh, open up our restaurants at this point again.
Would you revisit what happened when the restroom was left open? Go ahead.
Yes, so inadvertently, there, there was this restroom in the splash pad that was left unlocked one night, um, by staff. And during that timeframe, just that short period of overnight, somebody had taken the rubber doorstop off of behind the door, um, melted it with something and then rubbed rubber marks all over the walls. So we had to clean that off, but, uh, you know, it wasn't a big deal, but it's, it's time, you know, from staff and a little bit of money and cleaning product and that, but just in that short timeframe, it didn't take long of one restroom being open overnight for that to take place again. So we're, we're still experiencing vandalism, we will continue to experience vandalism. Other cities around us are, uh, I think Leyton or Riverdale, uh, got hit really, really bad a few weeks ago. Um, the vandalism continues, but I, I really. The vandalism continues, but I, I really just bring this up, so, just to revisit it, so I get direction from you on where you want to go, because we are getting questions from residents on what are we doing.
I feel you probably already looked into this, but we've looked at cameras on the outside, and I'm sure it's way.
I'd like to sort of, Jenny, if you would.
So, yes, we actually applied for a grant for cameras to, but we were denied that grant money. We don't have a healthy enough park impact fee budget for us to allocate them. I'm not comfortable right now until that budget gets a little healthier, gets depleted too, too much to expend any funds out of that. So we're in a holding pattern. Would you have some additional grant opportunities that we're looking into to try to get some funds for that camera system?
Do you remember what the cost was, I forgot, for the cameras?
It was around $23,000 for the camera systems at the main park and Millennium Park. We have a little, and that's just the cost of the infrastructure for the cameras. We would have to be subscribing to some type of an internet provider long-term to be able to have access to that, so we haven't put those costs together yet.
Do you remember what the cost was for the previous vandalism on the main park? Just about where? Came down to the bank. And that would happen, is that an approximate, probably, unless somebody came in and really destroyed it?
That, that was, I would consider that really destroyed. We had one toilet that was destroyed and spray paint throughout the entire thing. We had stalled divider doors that were messed up, had to be replaced. That's a little bit excessive compared to what we've seen over the years. However, somebody did try to burn down the Independence Restaurant several years ago, lit the garbage can on fire, that was a big deal. Other than that, typically what we're dealing with is feces on the wall, ceiling, wet toilet paper on the ceiling, which is hard to come off. Spray paint is always a given, so that amount of money is a bit excessive based on what we generally see. But there's a lot of man-hours that don't necessarily get listed down as.
As you guys go in and do the cleanup?
Part of it.
You guys go in and do the cleanup?
Yes.
Is it to the point that we have to have somebody in, a professional, to do it? Because it's.
Yes.
It's not bad?
Yes.
That's where.
Not every time, of course, but yes, there are some circumstances where.
Is that, I don't feel like.
I'll just say it, we don't, I'll just say it, we don't make enough money to deal with some of what we deal with.
Well, that's my whole point.
So it's a, it's a safety issue for sure.
Yeah. So we spent $9,000 so far on porta potties.
And they were closed in '23, so we were, this is two years into this.
So this is two years, so divide that in half then?
Double it.
Double it.
Eighteen, you know, eighteen grand in the last two years in porta potties.
So that's a.
So that's what I'm thinking of, you know, do we, do we save the nine grand a year? Do we pay three grand possibly once a year to get it cleaned, and we're still saving six?
It's a gamble because we don't know how many times that would be vandalized, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Director Fife, you've spent, as far as I can hear, $23,000 over the last two years for porta potties, right?
Approximately $18,000 for porta potties.
Okay, $18,000. At, off the top of your head, because I know you don't have exact figures, but if a restroom was to be, I mean, destroyed, toilets, sinks, panes, everything, like they've done in other cities, would we be about that much or more in a one-time vandal?
I would say it would be that much in a one-time vandal. And typically, if they're going to hit one, they hit both, if they hit the women's, they hit the men's, because they're together and they're both open.
Right. So my, my comment is that, you know, I think, yes, we're spending money on porta potties, but we're saving a lot, a lot more money from the vandals taking out the places.
Okay. Well, you might want to bring your attention that if the batteries are, the battery over there is rented, then whoever's renting it has access, will be key in there, able to access those restrooms, so they're not closed constantly.
Yes. Yes. I think that's great.
They are available to renters, and that has not been an issue at all.
Which is not available to public. So we have Fall Festival coming up, are they going to be open there?
Yes, they always are, yeah. We do open them for free events, movies in the park, Fall Festival, Easter egg hunt.
So really?
I think we should leave the closed for us this year.
You want to add a motion?
Yep.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Just, do you have money in the capital projects fund to do the camera infrastructure?
If you assign that money to their, yes, we can draw into the capital projects to, to do the camera system.
And then we certainly have the money from not renting the porta potties anymore to maintain these subscriptions, so.
Ideally, assuming we didn't get vandalism to the extent.
Sure.
It would certainly deter, our hope is that it would deter, probably, however, you know.
Serious studies, it's done studies that have cameras, how it's affected the vandalism?
Not that I know of.
You know, because I know it's pretty tricky. You can only use cameras to survey the outside, obviously.
Cameras are only good if you can identify the person.
And that's what.
If they look at the camera, yeah.
Yeah, and then you're still guessing.
Maybe that's something we need to research with the other cities to see if there's any data we can use.
Before we do an investment in cameras, I'd like to see if there's any type of studies to see, you know.
There's some somewhere.
If it's effective, then sure, we've got some money that we can save a long run. How many porta potties do we have?
One ADA and one standard at the main park, and one ADA at Independence and Millennium. So four total, which was $9,000 a year, and then I did budget, we went over this at the work section, session, another $2,700 to provide one porta body per park through the winter months, because some cities do do that. So it's actually 9,000 plus, well, you know, they would, the public restrooms will be closed during the winter anytime, so, anyway, so it's 9,000 plus the 2,700, but we're really just looking at the, the 9,000. And I, and I would add, you know, I approached council a while ago about the disc golf course improvement project, proposed to use the per capita rent grant funds for that, that is, this would, this takes priority for me. This is certainly, cameras are certainly a project we could throw that money at, but to the tune of about $7,500 would help.
We need to maintain some type of public restroom through the day while the park is being used by public.
Do we?
Well, that's what the porta potties do.
Correct, yes, sir.
So I guess you just need to make a decision on what sort of access to a restroom we have.
Well, Mayor, can I just say one quick thing? If the city, if he's getting questions from people in the city, then what we need to do is we need to put a campaign out or on the website, things and reasons why they're closed, and explain it out, vandalism is, you know, is still going on, and it just doesn't, it's not, it doesn't pay to keep a public.
So is this typical of every city?
I don't know of every city. I know that Pleasant View does, and I know that North Austin has experienced it, I know that Riverdale has done it, and I know that Lakeview has done it.
I just look out, they were closed during the day because of vandalism?
They provided porta potties.
Okay, that answers the question, then. They do porta potties, they have their restrooms. Seems to be porta potties is our best.
Any more discussion, or are you ready?
I don't sure we have much of a choice at this point in time, other than to continue keeping the porta potties available, keeping the restrooms closed, except for nature events, which I know they open, you know, it's basically for daily use. I imagine the biggest impact is during summer, during summer season, and we're out of that now, or closing them.
We are out of that now, yeah.
So, so it's a matter of $20,000 a year, approximately, or $18,000 a year?
Uh, $9,000 a year plus $2,700 for three during the winter, I have budgeted for.
So $10,000 a year.
Uh-huh.
I'll make the recommendation to continue the way it is until we can get a further study of looking at cameras or other things that can allow you to open up the restrooms and maintain them for security. I'm glad to know, I did not know that they're open on events, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. That's my motion.
Thank you. Give me a second, we do have a second then. Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any other questions, those you have, thank you. Item F, discussion, possible actions to adopt, Resolution 25-12, personnel and procedures update. Councilmembers?
Good evening, Council. What I'm asking tonight is to remove the officer progression scale out of the city policy and move it to the police policy. We're only governance, the police department. When we wrote this a few years ago, we had great ambitions of meeting all these training hours, and since then, some of the trainings have become unavailable, some of them have become shorter. As we go through our accreditation, we need to meet certain standards, so the convenience of being in the police policy, and we can modify that as needed.
Any questions? I have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-12, personnel and procedure update, as stated by Chief.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, this is also a roll call, please. Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item G, discussion, possible action to adopt Resolution 25-09, which is Weaver County, Utah, pre-disaster mitigation plan. Turn the time over to Jack Fogle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I sent you out the plan about a month ago, and we received it from IEM, who helped us put it together. So this plan is a requirement for us to get certain grants, brick grants, HMGP grants, fire grants, things like that, from FEMA. So we're not allowed to submit as a city, we have to submit as a county due to our population. So we've been working on this since before I started at the city. So I started on it in November of '22, we submitted it to the state last year, at the end of the year, got approval from the state, and then sent it on to FEMA, and FEMA gave it their approval. The last step to this is that we, every entity that was part of this approves it, approves this plan. So worked with all the cities in the county, all the districts, north through fire district, the water conservancy districts, schools, churches, and we got community input, which thank you, Grover. So they asked for community input, and we had 205 members of the community reach out. Of those, 40 of them were Harrisville residents, and Grover allowed me to hijack his senior lunch in one day and make them fill out those pamphlets, so really appreciate that. So if you read through the plan, you'll notice that a lot of our topics focus on seniors and how disasters can affect seniors, but that was because we got a lot of feedback from seniors in our community, so that was our focus in our plans and goals. So do you guys have any questions about it? I know it was really long, it's 1,200 pages, and it's not the most fun reading.
I don't want to take it back to a senior lunch in the CC.
If somebody wants to review it, I'm happy to email it to them, I really don't want to prick them up for anybody.
I actually did read the majority of it, and I think it's a good plan. The other day, when we were having the fire, I kept thinking, I'm glad we have something in place.
Yes.
I thought it was a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I know it's a big job, this was going on, I think, before I became mayor or Reddick, we needed it at that point, so thank you for your help in getting it done. Any more questions or items, discussion for this?
No, I will make a recommendation, uh.
Motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-09, Weaver County, Utah, pre-disaster mitigation plan.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, I ask, a roll call on this, please. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Go with you now. Item number six, this public comment, so as those in the audience that have anything to address the council, you can come up with a point, state your name, and you have three minutes, and your time is short.
Senator Harris, I know you'd be disappointed if I didn't get up, I'll make the point of clarification that if you had not opted for any increase today, the amount of money that the city would have collected, which included new growth, would have been $1,054,000, not $1,027,000, rounding. Your increase by saying you wanted that rate, which I'm confused, because agenda item says you're going to adopt Resolution 25-11, a resolution adopting fiscal year 2026 fiscal budget, I didn't hear any motion that adopted that, that's what your agenda says that you're going to do, and in my mind, you would be adopting a budget, not a rate, so I'm confused. But the $1,054,000, if you didn't make any increase, represents $27,000 more because of the new homes that were built, much like was given, the gamble across the street. That's what that rate really gives you, so, yes, that was funded there, your increase that you really did was $19,000, so that's what was in the publication, $19,000. And I guess what I'd like to say, you need to start your timer, thank you for this, all right. What I'd like to see in the future is when we have truth in taxation, rather than hearing, oh, we need to maintain our rate and everything else, the publication came out, said you're going to increase your budget by $19,000. Somewhere in the proposed budget you were given, it would be easy enough to say, here's where that $19,000 is going, because in my mind, that's what you had been approving today, $1,072, it all should be lying bare and doubt, and it should be easy enough to say, this is where that is, we needed to increase money for uniforms, for more toilets, whatever, but it seems like it should be a simple process in the truth in taxation. I walked away with my own views of how, what was going on, I didn't care what you were going to spend it on, and I saw in Weaver County's, the school district, they enumerated what it is, and I hope they talk to my representative, that it gets to be more clarity in these truths in taxation. Where's the money going? If you have additional costs, just like I do, then I change my budget somewhere else. Yes, you're always going to have something new, and yes, you should ask for reserve, but I'd like to think that you could go back and say, what are the essential items, and what items do we need to give up? You just decided today, you're not going to do a camera on some, on a line, just to do it, that's part of the budgetary process. But again, the idea that no increase was only going to get you the $1,027, and I know I'm talking about, because I got the number from the auditor's office, they read the number right off to me, that's what was presented to the city. When you're basically approving a budget, then the rate gets set after that, that's my point to you. As far as toilets, I understand the vandalism happened because they weren't locked, it was inadvertent. I know many times I've been over, it looks like they're open during the day, or it's a splash pad. If they're going to be closed, then they ought to be closed, I guess. Otherwise, you're talking about vandalism, so maybe I'm off, and the days I was there, somebody else was there working it out, but I saw them cleaning them, but those were open, and I was almost going to tell people, go over there if you don't want to use the porta body. Thank you.
Steve Mueller. Okay, first of all, I'd like to find out from the city council, they can tell me why the pond at the park doesn't have that erosion system working. I talked to somebody and they said, we don't have the money. You have the money to put up a very expensive fence around the public works parking lot, but you can't fix the pond. Mosquitoes are terrible. If you live there, why aren't you all know? Another thing that I have a problem with is the Harrisville City is collecting utility tax on every homeowner for every utility. If you add that up, it's almost as much as we're paying the city for our taxes. If we're gonna have to pay this utility tax to the city, why don't you make it open so the people, it's not a hidden tax like it is now. So the people can actually see what you're charging us to be part of the utility. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Steve.
Peace and happily. Um, some, some good comments. I appreciated the discussion that went on regarding the motion for a tax increase. Although I have, I have some, uh, questions and one concern. The first concern is, um, I echo the concern of, of, uh, of Kevin Caris about not voting on Resolution number. That is a technicality, but is that an invalid vote? That's one question. Second question is, um, we were, we were told that a, when the addition of acquiring bond money and the, the dis, the decision and discussion to build a new building would not affect property taxes, and yet that's a topic that comes up in our discussion. Is we're building a building and we're worried about that we're not gonna have enough money because of we're building a building? That would, I, I guess, be counterintuitive to what the public was told prior to that vote. And so is that not an increase of property tax because of a building? And then the last thing that I think is important, and this is my grave concern. Uh, how can, how can a council member be present and on a phone call and be allowed to vote? Um, I, I think that that's very concerning and I'd love to have an answer to that question.
Any more of the public? All right, I'm going to close on the comments right now. And since there seems to be a problem with the, the understanding of the Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, Council, I'm gonna ask, are you gonna do that again? I'm not sure. I don't have the, on the record, but I think Jack could find it for us if he made that.
Yes.
And maybe you need to match, you made that. Could you also bring up the, the numbers on the screen there so we can redo this? So we will redo the whole thing, if you don't mind?
I made a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six final budget for Harrisville City, Harrisville Community Reinvestment Agency and Four Mile Special Service District, and maintain the current verified tax rate. Uh, point zero zero one five six two.
All right. Can you wait a second?
Steve.
Steve, yeah. Steve, are you okay with that again?
Yeah, yeah, second, yes.
All right. Then we had a roll call vote on this. I was going along with the placing of this one, so do you know which one I had first?
Yes.
One second, let me just scroll back up.
Okay.
Uh, so Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Okay, yeah, that, that, Councilmember Fawcett? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
And Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Do you know that again? Hope that clears up any missions that we might have had a problem with. It's, uh, now moving on to item number seven, which is Mayor Council follow-up. I'm gonna ask Chief Wilson if there's anything he'd like to report to the council.
All right, um, accreditation is now at ninety-plus percent. Right now, we're waiting for Edition nine to be, um, put out by Power BMS so we can finish up a couple of the updates. And then we'll have the accreditation auditors come out on site to start the process of finalizing our accreditation. So, um, Assistant Chief Moore has been a great job given us there. You could be, be a parent of one of the first ones up in this north area to have it, so I'm pretty excited about that. We're gearing up for the start of school today. Heather says that we're still in the need of a crossing guard. If anyone knows someone who would like to see a crossing guard over at Majestic? Or, or Peoples. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Director Five, any more?
Is it appropriate for me, is it appropriate for me to address concerns from residents during this time?
If you want to show.
So the splash pad restrooms are open for the health department. We're required to have those restrooms open. Anybody in the park is certainly welcome to walk over and use those. Um, and we're comfortable having those open because there's so many people there regularly. There are constantly parents there keeping, trapping their kids. We get very few vandalism, uh, issues with that one. Um, however, that vandalism issue was due because it was, it was open overnight, so that was the inadvertent part. Um, the pond area is certainly on our to-do list that has been for a couple of years. We literally just had to prioritize projects and work with the staff that we have, so it's not been overlooked. We're aware of it. It's just on the to-do list to get done, so we'll, we'll just work towards that as we can. I don't have anything further.
Thank you.
Minister, did you want me to address comments or do you?
Thank you, Steve. Sure.
So the comment, uh, regarding electronic participation, the city adopted during COVID an electronic participation policy where council members that have been identified can participate in council meetings electronically, whether that's via Zoom or phone. Uh, we, we have allowed that to happen, uh, since COVID. But actually, it happened prior to that. We just adopted a policy during COVID. As far as, uh, council, council and mayor follow-up that I have, just a reminder that we will be meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at seven PM to canvass the election results from the primary election. So I encourage you to put that on your calendar as a reminder. You'll get that packet shortly, um, if I remember right. Not everything is disclosed in the packet, but will be given to you at the time of the canvas. Is that correct, Jack?
Currently, the county believes that they will have the results for us at nine AM, the morning of our campus. So I will send you what I have beforehand, but expect that morning to get the rest of the information and everything finalized from the county.
Same, same time.
Same time, seven PM on the twenty-sixth. I know me and the board of canvassers have that. All right, thank you. Uh, Matt, do you have anything to add? Okay, Grover?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, I noticed that, uh, down the corner, a hundred, what is it, a hundred east and fourteen hundred north and west street, there's a utility, uh, uh, which one, the electric thing that's been tagged. Who do we contact to make that, basically fixed? It's on the back side, it's on the east side, so you don't see it from one hundred, but you do see it from fourteen hundred.
Jesse, is that something that you can take back to public works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a Rocky Mountain power issue.
Yeah, and that's what I wondered, I don't know if we need to contact Rocky Mountain, but, you know, we can get those tags taken off and at least it doesn't leave an open sore or now we can start doing other things. Okay?
Thank you, Jesse.
That was the other thing. And I think you answered the question as far as on the policy on COVID, as far as electronics. We did the same thing in the mosquito maintenance. And the other thing was addressed what Steve had said. Uh, you know, as far as mosquitoes are there, it's a simple phone call to mosquito maintenance. They will come out and spray. It's that simple. And, uh, maybe as a city, we need to be, at least give a caucus and other, but as citizens, they can easily make a phone call. And, you know, mosquito will come out, they'll do that. We need to do that more often. I'll be glad to make the phone call.
A survey on that board that's.
Yeah, I can make the call. I know the people. Yeah, but that's a very simple thing and I'm sorry that I asked now to clarify.
Thank you. Karen, you have anything? No, I don't. All right, where is it? Steve?
Yeah, just so you're aware, I asked Jenny to make a phone call and some neighbors that were a little concerned after the fire on the hill, they're concerned about the property, uh, but something that's in the middle of where I live and the riot and everything, and it's, it's very, very dry, um, and long. And so I just asked Jenny to check and see what we can do, so just so you know that that is something that I just let her know. Just here, maybe, uh, make a little statement.
All right, thank you, Steve. And I'm just gonna end by saying we, um, were able to have North through Fire over for lunch yesterday. We appreciate all they've done with the fire, um, on the hill. They've put many hours into it. We felt really grateful that they even had the training they did. Uh, and, and so grateful for all the community involvement and our neighbors. And, and it's nice to see that sort of, uh, effort coming together and so loving any. Having a house fire myself, I know that's could be terrifying and I, I feel for people in those situations, so I really am grateful for that, so.
One comment. One person that I have to give a shout out to is Boyd Walters, because of that, uh, large piece of property behind my house on the north side. He is extensively taking his, his cutting rig and gone with about three swabs from the fence line in. So this level down.
Check. Good. It's great with a fire lit.
Yeah, yes, it's created a firearm. He's very sensitive to that. And that might be a good thing to pass on without, uh, who the property owners are, but if they can do that, that creates a better.
All right, that's all I have. Um, item number eight is adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for coming.